Good afternoon. It is four thirty P M on Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We will call the City Council meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. Before we start, I will say that I am involved with item number two point three on the agenda, so we plan to move that to the last item prior to adjourning this meeting. Moving forward, we do have a lot of business today, so we will get started with item number one, the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number two point one, public hearing and ratify the adoption date on the two thousand twenty-three M S A S improvement project.
Counselors, this was a hearing that we previously held last September, but for whatever miscommunication happened, we didn't get the publication requirement, so we just have to hold the hearing again and make sure everything was published. At the first hearing, we had one person speak and ask about the cost of the assessments, and that was all that we heard.
Perfect.
I'll offer the resolution.
So this is open now again?
Yep, so it's open again for a public hearing.
See if anyone, any comment?
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I didn't see anybody. I just saw. Offer the resolution closing the public hearing and ratifying the adoption date of the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-seven from September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two to July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Warmka.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number two point two, public hearing on the final assessment rolls for the two thousand twenty-two surface reconstruction project.
May I present, city counselors, this be the public hearing for the final assessment adoption for the two thousand twenty-two surface reconstruction project. The engineering report for this project recommended the special assessments be at the forty-five percent rate, or forty-five percent of the full reconstruction rate, which equates out to eighteen hundred dollars per residential parcel. There were seventy-two parcels that received benefit from this project. We have not received any written or verbal objections to the proposed assessment amounts in my office. I'm not, don't think finance has either. It'd be my recommendation, we open the public hearing and go through project by project, seeing if anyone wishes to be heard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stodheim. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and we will go through these six items, one by one, starting with item one, nineteenth North Street from Broadway to Franklin Street. Franklin Street from twelfth North Street to seventeenth North Street. Washington Street from nineteenth North Street to Highway fourteen. Tenth South Street from Summit Avenue to Roslin Road. Roslin Road from tenth South Street to South Terminus. And finally, Washington Street from fifteenth South Street to seventeenth South Street.
I'm being, I don't see anybody out there. I'll offer the resolution, close the public hearing and adopting the final assessment role for the two thousand twenty-two surface reconstruction project payable over a ten-year period along with four point two five simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Warmka.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Moving on, we will move item two point three to the end of today's agenda. Moving on to three point one, a gambling permit for Church of Saint Mary.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the Church of Saint Mary to conduct bingo, paddle wheels, pull tabs, tip boards, raffle, gambling at Saint Mary's four seventeen South Minnesota Street on Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number three point two, Black Frost Distilling L L C liquor license extension.
I'll offer the resolution authorizing the bequest, the request to extend Black Frost Distilling L L C's liquor license to the adjacent parking lot at two oh one first North Street for an event being held on Saturday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, from one to, one P M to nine P M, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Warmka.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number three point three, liquor permits for the Herman Monument Society.
I'll offer a motion for the issuance of a liquor permit for the Herman Monument Society to serve alcohol during Herman Fest located at Harmon Park, one oh one North Garden Street, and Herman Heights Park, fourteen Monument Street on Saturday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-three, subject to the compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just one heads up again, at the August meeting, the Park and Rec, they will hear the rest of the Herman Fest Society closing the street, fireworks display, whatnot, and that'll be at August meeting.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item three point four, tobacco license renewal for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance, the annual renewal of tobacco license for Walgreen Company, six oh eight North Broadway Street, for the period beginning July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number three point five, Rodney's Tavern liquor license extension for sand volleyball tournament.
I'll offer the resolution to authorize the extension of Rodney's Tavern liquor license into Minnesota Street, beginning first North and first South Streets during spiking in the streets sand volleyball tournament on Friday, August fourth, two thousand twenty-three, beginning at twelve P M until one A M on Sunday, August sixth, two thousand twenty-three, subject to conditions.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Warmka.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number four point one, summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings.
I can start. The E D A meeting had finally got our lease approved for our four tenants that will hopefully be moving in this fall. So that was a nice accomplishment to get that taken care of. First Children's Finance gave us a thirty thousand dollar grant a while back, and we got the last of our money, and they actually took us out for lunch and talked to us about this project and where we're going, and so that was kind of a nice wrap-up for that. So I do have our cable meeting, which got postponed from last month. Interesting discussion, remember, we were going, there's controversy, a little bit over the Comcast supposed to have had an open office for their entire contract, and we know they closed. And Roger was working on that, and then he left, and then we got the new attorney and had to get him up to speed, so that discussion is happening this Thursday, so we'll find out what our city attorney is going to recommend on how we proceed with that, because it is, it was a violation of the contract. So we'll keep you, we'll let you know next month.
Great, thank you, Counselor Schultz.
Heritage Preservation did not meet this month. The Park and Rec meeting update. Further down the agenda, I won't talk a whole lot about it. We're going to look at a twelve thousand dollar irrigation system donation for Harmon Park. The fee schedule was given out two months ago. We did approve that. They gave Mr. Shugal, by the way, welcome aboard, Mr. Shugal, congratulations, our new Park and Rec director. They gave him a chance to look it over, and that will be at our August meeting, the new fee schedule for Park and Rec. That's it.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission didn't meet this past month, and last month, attended the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth, and it was a very good conference.
And I was unable to attend the Transportation Committee meeting, and Brown County Solid Waste has not met for a few months now, so nothing new to report.
Perfect. Yes, I will just go with Counselor Schultz. So the work that we were doing with First Children's Finance on the childcare was an eighteen-month project, and there was a lot of people that really helped us kind of get the community engaged and figure things out, listen to, you know, what some of the issues were and how we can solve them, and we're just really excited to be opening Westridge Place here soon. It's nice to have some tenants, and from how it sounds, you know, we're keeping a lot of existing spots, but are going to be opening a few new childcare spots as well, so that was nice to have that come to fruition. Also attended the League of Minnesota Cities event in Duluth, got a lot of good updates on things going on, and yeah, that's all I have.
My understanding, they did Spock talk a lot about the marijuana law. They recommending us to do anything moratorium, or what are they recommending?
Technically, nothing at this point. I mean, even if you did a moratorium, it lasts till the end of the year anyway, and they're not issuing licenses until two thousand twenty-five. What they're doing in the meantime is getting the Office of Cannabis Management in order, and you know, they kind of have very loose guidelines right now. The county itself can limit it to, to dispensaries countywide, you know, one per twelve thousand and five hundred residents, and once a county reaches that, a city can basically say no, they don't want a dispensary. We, as a city, could limit it to one because of our population size, or we could just not. I want to get more clarification, you know, can we limit it to five? You know, if that's the route we want to go, can we up that limit to, you know, whatever we want, but we'll know more as they get the Office of Cannabis Management up, and probably in two thousand twenty-four, that'll be up and running, or the end of the year, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mayor?
I attended, and Larry did as well, the Sister Cities Award Banquet. The Concord Singers were awarded this year, and recipients of that award. It was a nice evening out at Shell's. And also, the Georgia's Steering Committee met, and we'll be taking up that business later in the meeting today. And then I did participate in the New Brick. Paul Wessel did a presentation for Cory on the, on the project, and he did an excellent job in his presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to five point one, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities presentation. We have Shane Zart here from Flaherty and Hood and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities to give us some Minnesota legislative updates. Mr. Zart, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you, and well, thank you for the introduction. Again, my name is Shane Zart. I'm with the firm Flaherty and Hood, and here to provide an update, as we do, we try to do every year, visit as many of our member cities as possible to talk about the session that was, some of the issues that'll impact cities, some of them you already brought up. And I will say, my caveat this year is so much happened this session that we're going to touch on a couple of the big ones. L G A, bonding, a few other things, but there's, if I tried to cover everything that happened this year, I'd be here way too long, and you guys have an agenda to get to after me. So I'm going to move through a few things real quick, but I can take some questions. And, and just as some additional background before we get started, most of this, or for most of you, this is refresher, but what is the C G M C? So the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is a membership organization of city governments all outside of the seven county metro area, and advocate together collectively at the Capitol on, on a set of key issues. L G A and property taxes, always one of our number one issues, because it impacts your pocketbooks, your residents' pocketbooks, as it comes to, to property tax relief. Environment and energy, economic development, transportation, annexation, and land use, and then labor and employment, which is both an issue that we do some advocacy around at the Capitol, but also provide information and services to our members on emerging trends and that, and there are plenty of those coming out of this session, by the way, as a service to our members as well. So we'll talk about a couple of specific issues and some of the broader session dynamics, but to kind of set the stage, want to highlight some of the C G M C's top priorities this year. First of all, we were asking for a hundred fifty million dollar investment into L G A, plus some formula updates to, to benefit cities, and a large bonding bill. Those are the top two items on the slide there, and I'll skip right over those for the sake of time, because we're going to dive into those in some other slides. Lead line inventory replacement was a bit of a new issue, but there was some state investment in this year. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the next few items are some that are highlighted on this slide, but frankly, when I mention things, we run out of time for, even though these are really, really important things, I'll pause on them here for a second, because we don't have slides on them, again, just to keep me within my timeframe and keep you guys on your agenda moving, but I will highlight permanent and ongoing funding for city streets of all sizes. That includes increase to M S A. Now, that's coming through some of the taxes and fees that the legislature increased in the transportation space, and for cities over five thousand, the creation of a larger cities assistance account. So this is new. Your city engineer may know even more than I do. I know MinDOT State Aid is still trying to estimate exactly what this will mean for cities, because it is new, but a couple of the, the fees and revenue shifts that they did in the transportation bill will give some additional money to larger cities in transportation. We draw the large city, small city line at population five thousand. So over five thousand population will see some new money. The key there, and the benefit to this new account, is that it's not limited to your M S A system. So that's why the legislature did that, get some additional help to cities for street maintenance outside of just the municipal state aid system. And although it's a big benefit to some of your neighbors, not necessarily New Ulm, for the first time ever, smaller cities will have some dedicated revenue flowing to them for their city streets, which we're celebrating as well. Corridors of Commerce, if Highway fourteen wasn't under construction right now, headed toward completion, this might be my A number one issue, because the mechanism that we've used often to fund Highway fourteen, I, as many of you know, our firm also worked with the Highway fourteen partnership for years to advance some of those projects. Corridors of Commerce was what helped us get some of it done. There's more funding flowing through that program, and some programmatic updates that will benefit, we're optimistic, will benefit rural projects like Highway fourteen, rural highway projects going forward. Thankfully, Highway fourteen between here and Nicolet will hopefully cut in a ribbon by October, and we don't have to worry about it for the term here, so, but, and I should mention, just to give kudos, Representative Torquellson was the author of some of those changes that we think will be positive. That was an issue, as much as, we'll talk about some things that did get very partisan, this is one that stayed relatively bipartisan or nonpartisan. Folks set it aside, both House and Senate worked together on these corridors of commerce changes. The bottom two issues on this slide, childcare, economic development grants, and community support programs, Greater Minnesota Workforce Housing Development Fund, these are huge issues that, again, I'm going to give short change to. I will say, I passed out some packets, got some more information on the various buckets of funding that, that were funded. On the childcare space, you mentioned adding some slots here in town. There's, the legislature did put a lot of money behind childcare this year through Deeds Childcare Grant Program. Half of those dollars will fund, flow to Greater Minnesota, also put some money toward the initiative foundations throughout the state. They've done a lot of work in partnering with communities, also partnering with providers, providing technical assistance directly to providers and by partnering with local governments, so a lot of money flowing around in the childcare space, hopefully to, like you said, retain some of the childcare slots that we do still have, and continue to build, as that's an emerging issue for a number of young families, and such a significant issue that's become a workforce issue, I know, for many of our communities. Same thing with housing, historic investments in housing, both in the affordable housing and workforce housing standpoint, and I don't even have time to get into some of that, but I will take questions if we got them, because we got to keep things moving forward. And, and this is kind of the graphic that we put together to describe session. On the left there, you have C G M C's priorities, we threw ourselves in there, the D F L priorities, other interest groups, they all went into this big cloud of dust is where we're all fighting, and what we're all fighting over is a massive state surplus. But, and then on the right, what came out of it, in at least our cartoonish version, is some pretty good funding outcomes, in large part because you got that much money sloshing around. They did, were able to fill up a lot of buckets with at least a little bit of money with the amount of money the state had at its disposal, and some mixed, though, policy outcomes, and we'll, we'll touch on a couple of those. And, but just how much money were we talking about? I don't know. I remember where I was when they announced the November forecast. We all knew there was going to be a surplus. Nobody predicted it was going to be this large. And I was, we were making our way around the state. I was in the Moorhead Council chambers, actually, when they announced the November forecast, and I think my jaw hit the floor there, because seventeen point four five billion dollars they had to spend. A lot of that money was one-time money, only so much if it was ongoing, but there was a lot of money at their disposal. And as we've approached some of the, the specific issues, as you all know, one of the reasons when I showed you that chart on the left there, we had D F L priorities going into the big fight, didn't have a note for G O P priorities, and there's a reason for that this session. The D F L holds the House, the Senate, the Governor's Office, in large part, you know, set the agenda, with, with very few exceptions, it was the D F L show to run. And anytime you have single-party control of, of the legislature, and this year was no exception, the volume and speed of legislation that we saw moving this year was incredible. As you all know, and I think has been a frustration of many of ours, a lot of years, we see them wait until May fifteenth before they start passing all their big budget bills. This year, we saw big headline-grabbing bills passing in January on big, big topics. The hundred percent by twenty forty carbon-free standard passed in the first week of February. Other bills that both that spent money, that made huge policy changes, passed in January, all passed in January, and continued, that pace continued from January to May. We never got any sleep, I think, until June. Now I'm a little bit rested. One of the things that was a factor for us, increasingly so over the past ten years, the D F L majorities that we did have this year made up of a larger percentage of metro area members. Even compared, and we're going to do some of our, this data at our, our summer conference coming up, compared to the D F L trifecta that was in, in charge in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, where it was Governor Dayton and two D F L-controlled chambers, a lot more of the D F L caucus in both the House and the Senate at that time was made up by Greater Minnesota D F Lers. And that did, did impact in some substantive ways the, the discussion, or how loud Greater Minnesota's voice was in some of the discussions at the Capitol. And what it meant in some cases was where we did have things where they might be harmful proposals, or where we might even say they were well-intended proposals, but didn't have a lot of consideration for how might they impact Greater Minnesota versus the metro, some of that nuance. There was really not a lot of backstop for those. There was not a lot of places that we could turn to have those Greater Minnesota-specific concerns heard. So let's dive into L G A. Now, I mentioned, we made a big ask this year, a hundred fifty million dollars. That's a big number, but again, we had a lot of money at the state's disposal, and part of the case that we were making was, L G A hadn't seen an increase since before the pandemic. It was the two thousand twenty nineteen tax bill was the last time that the state had increased L G A. And so during the, the years we were dealing with COVID nineteen, it was mostly just hold things harmless. Don't cut it, we were saying at the beginning, and then when the state had surpluses, we were asking for increases, but they didn't end up passing a tax bill, for example, in two thousand twenty-two. So this year, we came back with a big ask. Also, some formula updates, in, in large part, those are a lot of under-the-hood things. If I got into that, boy, would be, we'd be here all night. But for most of our cities, what I would say was, what the benefit of those changes were, was, A, it's been, it had been about ten years since the formula had been updated. We had a new census, so a lot of new data in, and kind of looking under the hood, is the formula still working for a lot of our cities? The answer was sometimes yes, sometimes no, sometimes maybe. In any event, what these formula changes did for, for our, our cities was really give a lot more runway, refresh some formula factors, the, the new formula versus the old formula is really modernized, kind of gives you a lot more runway, so that future L G A increases will have more of a benefit to cities like New Ulm than the old formula would. But again, that's a whole hour on its own to explain. And, and one of the things we were asking for that didn't happen, I will say, was inflation and population growth adjustment to the L G A appropriation, so that we weren't coming back to the legislature every year, asking for incremental increases. Have that built in. But L G A, believe it or not, with all the money they had to spend, had some stiff competition, and that's really, sure, they had a lot of money, they also had a lot of spending priorities, and we've got just a few of them on the, on the slide here, and this is just in the tax bill space. So they agreed to spend three billion dollars in the tax bill, but they also wanted to do child independent tax credits, Walls checks, those are, that's what Governor Walls called them for a while, but the direct rebates to taxpayers, public safety aid, housing aid, even some of this money, public safety aid, for example, does flow to our cities, but finding space for all of these things within that tax bill was still tough, despite the, the amount of money they had sloshing around. And even though we thought a hundred fifty million dollars was the good starting place, we were frankly a little disappointed. In the beginning of session, some of you remember this, if you're at our Legislative Action Day, Governor Walls announced his budget recommendations for all of state government, and tucked in there was an L G A recommendation, a recommended increase of just thirty million dollars. There's a lot of space between a hundred fifty million and thirty million. So we, we told him, the C G M C put out a press release, called it disappointing, inadequate, and where I say, some of you remember that, I know a couple of you were at our Legislative Action Day, the day he released his budget was the day before our Legislative Action Day. He was scheduled to come be our lunch speaker the following day, and we were a little worried for a minute he wasn't going to come, but, but he did. He did come, he listened to us, had a good back and forth about L G A, about the needs that we were asking for, where his for, where his starting point was in his budget bill. And to his credit, I think, walked away saying, I hear you, we get it. In the revised budget recommendation, he did come up from 30 to 40. Again, there's still a lot of space between 150 and 40. But I think the governor at the time said, you know, we're going to increase the recommendation. We can't come up as high as you, certainly you want us to, but take this as a good faith showing that we know that our first number was too low. So this slide just highlights some of our advocacy along the way, some photos of some of our members testifying in both the House and the Senate. But the next couple of slides, I think, are probably what you really want to see. The first is statewide, for program-wide, what each bill, what each proposal, so the CGMC's, Governor, House, Senate, and the final outcome proposed for LGA. And where you see the CGMC and the House, the second year is higher than the first year, that's because the CGMC's proposal, like I said, has that inflation and population growth, kind of automatic increase for some future years. The House took that and ran with it, put it in their omnibus tax bill. That did not make it to the final outcome. So we will be back asking for more in future years. It won't be automatic. But here's the important part, what does it mean for New Ulm? And the far-left column there is what the current law formula and funding would have meant had they not done anything for LGA this past legislative session. The far-right column is the final outcome. And what is there, about half a million dollars there? So pretty good increase. I guess for my own purposes, I'm pleased to say the CGMC's proposal would have been best for New Ulm. For your sake and your budget cycle, I wish that final column was the highest one because that's what you'll actually get this year is the estimate. And there's one of these in your packets, I should say, too. So you've got that going forward. But so LGA, again, the story's not done. We'll be back in future years talking to the legislature about that, but we're pleased with the progress that was made this year. So bonding. Now, I talked with a couple of you before about bonding in the city of New Ulm. I know you have a request upcoming. And bonding, we focus on because the 2023 bonding bill took such a long and winding road, a lot of fits and starts, also just kind of helps contextualize this past session, how weird it was, how contentious it was at times, how partisan it was. But, you know, the fundamentals are, we have a lot of infrastructure needs, both at the local government level, the state level. The bonding bill is off in the way that the state helps pay for those. And we hadn't done one in 2021 or 2022. The last bonding bill the state had had was in 2020. But it's also, as I mentioned, two DFL majorities in the House and the Senate. It's the one place that the GOP and the minority felt like they had some leverage. And that's because to, for the state to issue debt, it requires a 60% vote of both the House and the Senate. So you can't just pass it, especially in the Senate, with just a 34, 33 majority for the DFL, as slim as it gets in that body. You can't pass a bill with just DFL votes. You need some bipartisanship. So the GOP thought this was their one area for leverage and they were going to use it. In particular, the Senate GOP early in session said, we're not putting up a single vote for a bonding bill until we see some other things. Early on, it was, we need to see more tax relief for Minnesotans out of this surplus. Later in session, there were some other discussions. One of the things that came out of that was an insistence that if we're going to do a bonding bill, we also need to do some aid for nursing homes throughout the state. That was, became a component of the discussion. But the dynamic here was that they actually did vote down one of the bonding bills on the Senate floor in March, when the DFL tried to move it off the floor. And that's, up there is my colleague Bradley Peterson, the CGMC's executive director, looking not very happy. I think that's either before or after, right before or right after the vote, when it seemed like the bill was going to go down. Because we wanted to see those dollars get out to both local governments and projects throughout the state. But, you know, as many of you know, a bonding bill did pass at the end of the day. So what happened? How did we get there? One of the things that happened is on this slide. You know, this year, we keep saying it, or probably sound like a broken record, this year was unique. And the amount of money is one of, that the state had was one of the things that made it unique. The DFL, because of that amount of money they had, said, you know what? This year, unlike any other, we've got enough of a general fund surplus, we could pass an infrastructure bill without issuing bonds. We could just pay for it in cash. And if we're going to pay for it in cash, we don't need 60% majorities. We can just pass it with DFL votes. But if we do that, we're also not going to fund all your projects. You don't want to come to the table, you don't want to play ball, we're going to just fund our own projects. And for a number of the programs that the CGMC works on that are important to Greater Minnesota, the bill that the DFL put forward, that was that all cash infrastructure bill, would have shortchanged a number of things. So on this slide, what we've got on the left is some of the, PFA is Public Facilities Authority Water Wastewater Programs. You know, you can see, you go from 208 million in the GO bonding bill to 86 million in the cash bill. BPI, much smaller number. Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure, 3 million to 0 million. And then on the right there, the bar graph, the blue is the metro share of various buckets and the orange is the Greater Minnesota share. If you can see the orange up there, that's the Greater Minnesota share of various buckets. Parks and Trails, over 90% of the money in that cash bill would have gone to the metro area. Nonprofit grants, almost 80% to the metro area. Transportation dollars, between 80 and 90% was going to the metro area in that bill. So this is where I say, you know, the CGMC, we don't take one side or the other when it comes to who's in charge of the legislature, who, you know, who we think is, but we will tell you, I should say, who we think is right and wrong, or who, what we think needs to happen to the benefit of Greater Minnesota. So I think through this process, there were times we yelled at just about everyone. But we highlight this letter, this is a letter and an excerpt there from the final week of session, where there was a, it seemed like there was a deal to be had out there. A lot of these compromises were coming together, but all the parties weren't necessarily willing to come back to the table just yet. This CGMC's letter that went in basically saying, you know what, you've got a choice here. You can let this cash bill pass and underfund and undermine all of these Greater Minnesota initiatives, or we can come together, get this deal done in the final week and do what's right for Minnesotans. And I don't know that we've ever gotten more feedback on just about anything we've done in my seven sessions with the CGMC, and some of my colleagues have been doing it even longer in terms of, you know, an impact that a specific piece of legislature, or piece of advocacy had versus this letter. I think it was just the right tone at the right time. And you can call that genius, it was probably just luck, I guess. And that's my colleague Eric Simonson on the right there, talking to Minority Leader, Senate Minority Leader Mark Johnson. I don't know what they're actually talking about, they're probably talking about what they had for lunch that day, but we like to joke that's when the deal got done. But anyway, so the end result was actually three bills passing. The deal gets done and they end up passing three bills. One of them is the GO bonding bill. So the one that requires 60% vote, they got over the hump, they got a deal done to do it. Funded those programs at the levels that we were hoping for, that you saw on that previous slide in the GO column. And again, the second bill, they did pass a cash infrastructure bill, not the exact same one that we didn't like, but paired a GO bill and a cash bill to form a larger infrastructure package. And then a third bill is where that nursing home money ended up passing as well. So that was part of the same deal. They agreed we're going to pass all three of these, but it did move in a separate vehicle. So this is kind of our conclusion on this. And I think one of the things that make the work we do so fulfilling and so frustrating at the same time is, you know, what finally got this deal done? Well, it was public pressure from local governments, from the CGMC, from many others. The amount of time that had passed since a bonding bill, the credible threat of a bad alternative, that's what we call that cash bill. But also just, at the end of the day, legislators willing to set all those hurt feelings aside and compromise. So we were pleased with the final result, but boy, was it a road to get there. Going to touch on a couple of quick environment topics and then I'll get out of here because I think I'm already probably over time. But one of them is funding that the state passed for lead line inventory and replacement. So this was a new issue for the CGMC to dive into in terms of advocating for the state to provide some dollars to help local governments and homeowners identify and replace lead lines. But as some of you know, who've already been working on this issue, some of the reason that we are involved in this, that the state's involved in this, is because the federal government is going to start getting involved in this, making it a priority because, you know, no amount of lead in drinking water is safe. And there's some requirements likely coming down the pike to require some of this inventory, this mapping to begin with. So there will be $240 million coming from the state to communities to help with the inventory, but also that'll also be eligible for homeowners to access those dollars if you do have a lead service line to actually help with the replacement of that. So 240 million is a good number, although at one point, 900 million was the estimated statewide need. So we're calling this a good start or a down payment on what we'll ultimately need, but we're very pleased to see this pass this year. And again, for time purposes, and because we touched on a little of this in the bonding discussion, I'll skip real quickly through this slide. But this is some of the funding we were pleased to see pass in that final bonding bill to help fund both water wastewater upgrades and compliance costs throughout the state. And we're happy to see those dollars start to get out to communities as well with a large backlog of needs. So I do want to highlight some of the negative, or what I said was maybe some of the mixed policy outcomes. One is that, you know, there were a number of attempts. We showed you some of the, in the bonding context, some of the metro versus Greater Minnesota funding distribution. Well, those PFA programs, Public Facilities Authority programs that provide wastewater wastewater funding to so many communities throughout Greater Minnesota, in a few different instances, we saw policy language come forward in different bills that would have changed the allocation of those dollars largely to skew that funding toward the metro area. That was something that CGMC had to partner with the governor's office, with whoever would listen, frankly, to push back on. And at the end of the day, those changes didn't pass, but it was something that we did see brought up a few times throughout session. We also worked to narrow the scope of some permitting changes, permitting requirements, different things that would be required, really, as far as we read it. Almost anytime you do an economic development project, a large development project, there were bills out there that would have required a lot more costly and timely analysis before you can move forward those projects. And without getting too deep into the details, I'll just say, in ways that might make sense, even if they're well-intended in certain areas in the metro area, but in Greater Minnesota, we were very concerned that it would hamper our ability to achieve development of both, you know, economic development, housing projects, others within our communities. So, you know, some of those changes did pass, but they were thankfully narrowed, at least for the time being, to the metro area and cities of the first class in Greater Minnesota. So really just the metro area, Duluth and Rochester. But as a discussion, we could see continue. And with, you know, 2024 being, they passed the budget this year, 2024 being a policy year, that we might see more proposals like that. So that kind of leads us to our, this slide, which is looking ahead. Well, I mentioned a lot of talk about the bonding bill that did pass this year, but I also mentioned that one didn't pass in either 2021 or 2022 historically. The even-numbered year has been the year that they pass a big bonding bill. The reason it was such a focus this year is because they hadn't done one. So traditionally, when they miss one for two years, they might do two in a row. The last time we did that, we didn't pass one in 15 or 16, so we did do two in a row in 17, 18. So we anticipate another bonding bill will be a focus of the upcoming session to get, kind of get back on that schedule, back on track. Constitutional amendments. We've already heard talk of, some folks want to put a couple of different constitutional amendments on the ballot, maybe one related to the Equal Rights Amendment, one related to reproductive rights or abortion. The House DFL leadership in particular has said that might be a focus of theirs this upcoming session that would ultimately go on the 2024 general election ballot. Surplus spending, this one's got a question mark on it, and that's because we think there will be a surplus, but we don't know that. And we think there will be because, believe it or not, with all the money they did spend, they actually left some on the bottom line. And so the only reason they were really able to do that is because they also raised some taxes to pay for some of the spending that they did in the context of that surplus. So because they left money on the bottom line, we think there may be some funding available for a supplemental budget this upcoming year. And, but a lot of fix-it items from this session. When this much legislation moves this fast, there are unintended consequences, there are typos. The Department of Revenue already announced one that they found in the tax bill, and some of you might have seen those headlines, that could impact taxpayers, thankfully not for a couple of years, so they have time to fix it. But there are things like that, that we're going to have to deal with next session that maybe didn't get caught in the 2023 session. And policy, like I mentioned, this was the big budget year. Next year, they've got plenty of time to focus on policy. And the fun starts on February 12th. That's when they've designated the session start for next year. And just a note at the bottom of the slide there is that it's an election year, which always factors into the politics of any session. So I'll leave it there. We can take questions, what's up on the screen, but also in your packets of some of our events. Next week, actually, we'll be in Thief River Falls for our annual summer conference and then our fall conference in Willmar. And then, as you may have seen, but maybe not, this might be a new one, our Legislative Action Day is scheduled for March 20th in St. Paul. That's our lobby day when we invite all of you to come and lobby alongside us. So I'll stop there and take any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zart. Yes, very busy session. Any questions? Comments?
I don't have any questions but a comment, just thank you for an excellent presentation tonight, thorough. And I always like your publications, they're also very thorough, whether you're a new counselor or someone who's been around a while, they're always very productive and informative. So, thank you.
And thank you. And like I said, I talked for that long and there's a whole bunch of issues I didn't even mention. So, you know, we could go for even longer, but we won't.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for taking time to come tonight. Thank you. All right, moving on to old business, item number 6.1, MnDOT Office of Aeronautics Grant Agreement.
Madam President, City Councilors, this MnDOT grant agreement is a companion grant agreement to the FAA grant agreement that was approved back on June 20th. So this just pays for an additional 5% of the parking lot rehabilitation project at the airport.
I'll offer the resolution approving MnDOT Office of Aeronautics Grant Agreement Number 1054234 and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Sagan.
We do have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Counselor Warmka.
Yes.
President Beck.
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 6.2, the purchase of a 2024 rescue truck for the New Ulm Fire Department. Chief.
President Beck, and councilors, if you remember back in February, you authorized us to start preparing specifications and procure some bids for the new rescue truck. In this last five months, we've met with four vendors, and this is the quote that we received. We received, this is the only quote we received from any of the vendors. So it is, if you notice, it's North Central Emergency Vehicles along with Ward trucks. This will be a purchase through HGAC. HGAC is a nationwide procurement, government procurement service out of Texas. So what happens is, is most of the components on these trucks are pre-bid on a two-year basis. So don't think that, you know, this is a large number compared to everybody else, but these are, these are already bid numbers. All but about, if you look on the HGAC pricing, contract pricing sheet, all but 9%. And they're allowed 25% leeway just because of the custom things that people put on trucks and stuff. But for the most part, all but that, 91% of that truck is all pre-bid things. So if you notice the contract, we would have to, when the chassis, the Spartan chassis is finished, we would have to pay for that and then it would go to Ward to have the box put on the back, so.
Did you expect more bids?
You know, I think what's happening is that there's so much business out there that...
Outlooking?
Yeah, they're not really competing.
Do you think that's related to people kind of putting everything on pause during COVID and now things are kind of, like, everybody's just kind of busy?
I think so.
Yeah. I was surprised to hear there was only one as well, but hey, I mean, we could have not gotten any, so I guess.
Well, and, you know, and that's the one good thing about purchasing through HGAC, you know, those numbers are legitimate, so.
Yeah. No, that gives discomfort as well.
Yeah, and the 1997 Freightliners probably lived its life once or twice over, so.
Yeah, you know, we've been having some PTO problems with it. We've had some transmission problems.
That's what I've heard.
So.
The new one's two years.
It's still two years, yeah. So, yeah, we're hoping that it's more like a year and a half. One of the, one of the companies that we were dealing with was... a year and a half. One of the, one of the companies that we were dealing with was three years. And, you know, I'm, I'm kind of glad they're not the ones. So.
We better get them painted red. So I'll authorize, I'll make a motion, authorize the New Ulm Fire Department to purchase a 2024 rescue truck from Ward Apparatus through North Central Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $794,286.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Is there enough in our balance to cover expenses for our equipment revolving fund?
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you, Chief. Yes. Item number 7.1, Appointment to Human Rights Commission.
I'll offer a motion to approve the appointment of Thomas Campbell to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Stephanie Scuttry.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries. Welcome, Thomas. Item number 7.2, Park and Rec Donation. Mr. Shugel. I was called you Mr. Schmidt, sorry. Mr. Shugel.
Oh.
Council President Beck and councilors.
Welcome, by the way.
President Beck and councilors, I am here with you today to ask you to accept a donation in the amount of $12,000 offered to the city of New Ulm through the Park and Recreation Department from New Ulm Area Catholic Schools for the all expenses related to installation of irrigation at Harmon Park. And for those of you who might not know where that football field is, well, first of all, New Ulm Cathedral is a longtime user of that area. It is in kind of the outfield of Field Two down there, and staff feels it would be a huge improvement to that area. That gets a lot of use throughout the year, or in another year of a drought, and could see a lot of benefit from that. Along with that, a stipend not to exceed $500 in 2024 to cover additional utility and maintenance costs with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
And one comment at the Park and Rec meeting was that they're going to review that annually. $500 is a, what did the first year cost us? So they'll look at it annual. I'll offer the resolution to accept a donation in the amount of $12,000 offered to the city in Ulm through the Park and Rec Department from New Ulm Area Catholic Schools for all expenses related to the installation of an irrigation at Harmon Park, as well as a stipend not to exceed $500 in 2024 to cover additional utility and maintenance expenses associated with the project.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Was there any talk about a contract? You know, they're, they're giving us this money, and, and what happens if we decide in a couple of years that we want to do something different with that park?
Right. Yeah. So internally, staff has had communication with New Ulm Cathedral, and nothing set yet on that. But yes, we would be looking to have that. We do sign contracts with our user groups already to use areas. So it would be something easy to add within that existing.
I think I'd want that, I mean, if I was them. So, at least for so many X number of years. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shugel. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
President Beck.
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 7.3, a professional services contract, DNR Trails Grant Documentation Checklist.
Madam President, City Councilors, you previously authorized me to apply for DNR Trails Grant back in January of 2023. We submitted that application to the DNR on March 6th. We were notified on June 26th that we have been awarded $210,000 in DNR Trails Grant funding. This funding would be used to reconstruct a portion of the city recreational trail from 20th South Street to 7th South Street. I am prior to execution of this grant, there are a number of items in the Trail Grant Project Documentation Checklist that we have to complete. Many of those revolve around environmental review items. As with projects in the past, with federal funds, we have to do what's called a project memorandum. This is kind of similar in nature to that, but on a little smaller scale. So we are proposing to contract with Bolt and Mink to help us through that process, since they have a streamlined process for doing these things. We generally have a consultant help us with these on our federal aid projects. So in sake of time and to have staff working on project design and not project admin sort of work, we are proposing that we, that you would accept this contract with Bolt and Mink to help us through this process.
Thank you. My question is, where would the 9, 9170, where would those funds come from?
We would absorb it in our engineering department budget for this year, and then that would affect our request for the 2024 project, as we have other outstanding contracts that are carrying over year to year. So.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
This is a really nice sized grant. Did we have city funds projected to be spent doing this project?
Yep, there is, there is a local match. We will be contributing about $70,000 to $80,000 locally as a match.
How much again?
Between $70,000 and $80,000, which will be included as either a budget line item or included within the bonding for 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stottem.
I'll authorize the city engineer to enter into a professional service contract with Bolt and Mink in the amount of $9,170 to assist with the preparation of Minnesota DNR Trail Grant Project Required Documentation Checklist.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.4, 2022 MSAS Improvement Project Final Assessments.
Madam President, City Councilors, this is just approving the final assessment roles and setting the date for the public hearing for that 2022 MSAS Improvement Project. As you may remember, that was 20th North Street from Broadway to Front Street and Front Street from 19th North Street to 20th North Street. Improvements included roadway improvements, including curb and gutter, batuminous pavement, storm sewer modifications, concrete, excuse me, concrete sidewalks, and batuminous wrecked trail and street lighting.
I'll go ahead and offer that motion for the public hearing for Tuesday, September 5th, at 4:30 PM to talk about what Joe just mentioned. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.5, Brown Intertech Professional Services Agreement.
One more time for me, Madam President, City Councilors. The proposed item before you for this project is materials testing services for proposed 2024 capital improvement projects. We are with, working on the 2024 CIP, and within that project, we are proposing several full-depth reclamation projects. And in order to properly design those segments, we need to have core samples taken of the existing batuminous pavement and underlying aggregate base. Brown Intertech has performed many projects for us in the past, and we would recommend that this contract be awarded to them. As with the DNR item you just considered, these services would be absorbed in our budget and added, with the carryovers added to our 2024 budget request.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stottem.
I'll offer a motion to approve professional service agreement with Brown Intertech in the amount of $9,730 to provide materials testing services for the proposed 2024 capital improvement projects. Authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.6, Request to Brown County to Withhold Tax Forfeited Properties.
Council President, Counselor, before you is a request to Brown County to withhold the Mark Platt's Mall centerpiece and 1007 North Minnesota Street, so that we can go through the process of either looking to sell that to a developer, and then specifically for 1007 North Minnesota Street, we're looking at demolishing that building or that house there. So we need to let them know that we would like them to withhold it, so we can go through that process and get the land conveyed to us to facilitate any transaction.
Chris, what would be, what would happen, say, for instance, if we went and do that with that, that house? Would the, would the county or the state put that for auction?
Yeah. It would go out to private auction, and, you know, we could go that route. But again, I don't know what the condition of the inside of that house looks like, you know, and what someone would do. And if it doesn't get sold, then we can go through that process. But this just makes it easier. We can tear it down and then sell the vacant lot.
Basically doing due diligence and investigation work is what I'm understanding.
Yep.
Okay.
Three parcels at the mall?
The other two are already owned by someone else. This one is just the tax forfeited property, the middle section. The middle section is tax forfeited at this time.
That's what I was hoping it was. Thank you.
In regards to the mall, comment, does this help us for the future, say, of the boat that's there or other items?
Yes. Yep.
So things will get resolved as part of it.
Yeah, as soon as it's owned by someone, then we know who to send that to. That will actually remove those set items. But as of right now, at least under the street section, I asked the county, and they allowed us to remove the netting under there. At least under the street portion, there might be a little bit netting on the side, but under the street, no more nets.
Okay. Keep cleaning it up. So I'll offer the resolution authorizing a request for Brown County to withhold Marketplace Mall and 107 North Minnesota Street tax forfeited properties from conveyance or sale for six months to review any potential future redevelopment options.
Double second.
We have a motion and a double second. Any additional discussion? No, I think that this is great, too. We just need to keep moving forward with these. And in, so next, it would go to the county, and then they would, what is their next step then? They'd determine?
So they would accept our resolution, they'd bring it to their county commission, and then we would go through the process of working, being intermediary between the developer and the county for the mall portion.
Thank you.
For 1007, I think that would just be an interaction between us and the county to convey that, to let them know what we would like to do with it.
Perfect. All right. Anything to keep the process moving forward? Thank you. Any additional discussion? All right. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Warmka?
Yes.
President Beck.
Yes, that motion does carry. Okay. Moving on to item number 7.7, setting a public hearing date for noise variance request for the sand volleyball tournament.
And, Council President, Councilors, this is a request. They will be having live music on Minnesota Street that will go to about 11:30 midnight. They can only have music till about 9, 9 PM on the weekend. So this is their request for noise variance.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at 4:30 for a request from the city of New Ulm on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce for noise variance to permit amplified sound on Minnesota Street and Center Street or South Minnesota near the alley on Saturday, August 5th, 2023, from 8:00 PM to August 6th, 2023, 12:00 AM during the Spiking in the Streets volleyball tournament.
Second.
We do have a motion and several seconds. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.8, city of New Ulm street closure for sand volleyball tournament.
I'll offer a motion to approve the request from the city of New Ulm on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce to temporarily extend the closure to South Minnesota Street from Center Street to the alley from Saturday, August 5th, 2023, and noon to Sunday, August 6th, 2023, until 12:00 AM for Spiking in the Street and the sand volleyball tournament.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 7.9, Development Agreement with CBC Fisher Group.
Council President, Councilors, before you is just a request to enter into exclusive negotiations with CBC Fisher Group to develop the Georges Ballroom site at 405 Center Street, and then to make a recommendation to the Brown County Commissioners to authorize the county administrator and sta, and their staff to be part of that negotiation as well. What would happen is then this request would go to the county next week. We would then start negotiating with CBC Fisher Group to put a development agreement together, and that would go to the Georges Steering Committee again for their review, then to city council, and then to, to the county commission for final approval. Before you have, you know, again, a rough idea of what they're planning on doing, it'll be mixed-use, mixed-use development, underground parking, some at-grade parking, looking at about 54 units with some retail, with a retail component to it. Again, that's subject to change during the negotiation process, but it is a pretty good, pretty good development. There'll be some hoops that we have to jump through for the state historical side to, to kind of get to the tearing down portion. But we'll discuss all that through the development agreement and getting that through.
Any kind of rough timeframe?
If...
One year, two year, 10 years?
No, they're motivated to get it done as soon as humanly possible, per their letter of intent. If things go smoothly, we get development agreement in place, the state approves our mitigation strategy, they potentially would like to have it a dirt lot by November. But again, that's aggressive. State right now is looking at about a 30 to 45-day turnaround from when we submit our mitigation strategy. It's about 60% written. Once we have the developer on board, we can ask them how they plan to potentially salvage anything. That's kind of the piece that's missing from it.
Some of that homework's been done already, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Right.
So, you know, when they go through the demolition, if there's anything they can salvage, how they're going to salvage it. So 60% of that is written right now. It's just that final piece, and then we can submit it to the state for, for their approval.
Won't a large piece of that be as well as what the city, county, whoever's going to help with demolition costs?
That'll be part of the development agreement. Yeah. And that's where, you know, we can chime in with the different pieces, what they're expecting versus what, you know, city and county can, can put in and things like that.
And that's a huge number.
Yep.
Huge, huge number.
That it will be.
Chris, you just referenced salvage. Is that like, talking about like the sign, per se, you know?
That sign has to be salvaged. That's part of the, part of the state requirement is either they incorporate it in their design, or we have it somewhere on, on display somewhere within the semi-limits of that have a plaque just saying what Georges, what Georges was. Sure.
I'd like to see it move forward. And I'll authorize the city manager, city attorney and staff to negotiate development agreement with CBC Fisher Group to develop Georges Ballroom Site, 405 Center Street, and recommend the Brown County Commissioners to authorize the county administrative staff to be part of the negotiations with the CBC Fisher Group.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Mayor, I know that you're involved with, you know, coming from the historical society background, and as mayor have been attending the steering committee. So, yes, I would love to hear from you also.
Well, I'm pleased to see that, first of all, that the project is moving forward. It's long overdue, and in sitting in the steering committee and listening to the proposals, it would be a significant addition to the city of New Ulm, and also that the Minnesota Preservation Commission is a part of this in requiring us to go through due diligence as far as salvaging whatever we can historically. And the developer that you are approving negotiations with would, or suggested that they would incorporate into the design artifacts if they're able to salvage them. So it's a win-win for us all the way around.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
I've heard the rumors about how big the rats are inside that place. So, I've heard that.
Hot go hill. Right. All right. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion does carry. At this time, we will move back to item number 2.3. I'll pass the gavel to Counselor Schultz for this. I'll leave the room due to a conflict of interest, and I will come back for the work session to follow. Thank you.
All right. We're going back to item 2.3, public hearing, noise variance for Turner Hall or Turner, Turner Hall, depending on how you want to describe it. So this is a public hearing. Any questions? Anybody from the public?
Councilors, I did receive probably four or five emails and a couple phone, phone calls in, in huge favor of this. I had one, one resident say that they want to convey the message that they want the band to play louder, so that all the senior citizens can hear.
That's new. Never heard that one before. Okay. All right. Any, I'm not seeing anybody in the general public, unless Tony wants to talk about it. He's good. Okay.
Do we have, Nicole, close this hearing, or just, we conducted it?
Yeah, conduct the hearing.
Close the hearing. And approve the variance.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing. Hear and pass upon all objections, whether presently oral or in writing relating to the request for a noise variance subsequent to the public hearing, offering the resolution closing the public hearing and authorizing a noise variance, noise variance to permit amplified music sound at Turner Hall, 102 South State Street, to host a Turner Fest event on Friday, July 28th, 2023, until 10:30 PM.
Second.
Can we have a resolution? A second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.